I'd like to call the Monday, November 13, 2017 Regular Shockabe School Board Business Meeting to Order. Sarah, would you please take your line?
Powerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hallid.
Here.
Vickian.
Here.
Oz.
Yep.
Romance.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swansea.
Good evening. We will move right on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We move on to item number three. We are Shockabe Schools Good Move Items. We actually have a couple, but one in particular that we're going to highlight. And I would appreciate it if TJ Hendrickson, who is in the house, TJ, would you like it coming up? If you have anybody with you, any friends or family members with you today?
My whole family.
The whole family? Alright, let's get the whole family up. Let's get the whole family up. Stand next to TJ. Come on up, family. This is important.
I don't know.
You're as official as you need to be.
In the middle over there.
Come on up. Yeah, go ahead and come right in the middle. And as the family is coming up, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Congratulations to our Technology and Engineering Teacher TJ Hendrickson. TJ, who teaches at West Junior High School, is this year's recipient of the Minnesota Technology and Engineering Educators Association Teachers Excellence Middle School Award. TJ was chosen because of his efforts in the classroom and the school community. He is a fine example of how technology, education, and engineering are preparing students for productive futures. TJ has been with us since 1992. So first and foremost, let's get a little applause for TJ. The floor is yours TJ.
Geez.
Do you want to introduce your family?
Sure. This is my wife Kathy. These are my three children, Katrina, Libby, and Trey. This is my mother-in-law Linda. And this is fortunate. My dad's usually down in Florida, so we got a little early opportunity. They just, believe it or not, moved back up from Florida.
Oh wow.
So, nice to know we still got some Scandinavian blood. But yeah, it's been a unique pleasure over the years to be at Shockabe. And I have been lucky, fortunate, blessed, however you want to look at it. Had some unreal students over the years. And fortunately for me, it seems like every year they keep getting better and better. A joke with my kids, my memory's kind of like my hair. It's not all there, but I do remember students. So it has been a unique pleasure over the years. Every time somebody talks to me about what we're doing at Shockabe, the best thing is I can talk about our kids. I just kind of get to bump them and match them and all that other kind of fun stuff. But I will be honest, our kids, I'll put our students up against any kids in the state. And I would even market to say that our junior high kids are better than most of the college kids that I've seen. So as much as I love to say that it was something for me, a lot of it had to do with our kids. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate you guys taking the time. Thank you.
Our students are more than fortunate that you are with us at Shockabe Public Schools. And they're going to be better adults because of that.
Thank you. I think it's also fair to say that TJ's been on the cutting edge of a lot of different things over the years here. And pioneered a number of things that have brought recognition to the schools in Shockabe, but also have meant a lot for kids, of course. So this isn't a one-time thing. This is a history of excellence that he's provided the district. And I know many of us appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Alright TJ, suitable for framing. There you go. The recognition of your excellence.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And family, thanks for being here this morning.
Yeah.
It's awesome. Swat along?
There you go.
Those are going to be a bunch of steps there.
You guys can get together there. Get a little closer.
Big step this way.
Hey, you don't need the box.
This is getting awfully formal.
Christmas card.
That is a shame.
She had the faith for me to be in the wedding clothes.
Thank you again TJ.
Yeah, thank you TJ. I appreciate it.
Scott, before we move on, can I do one more good news?
Sure.
I would like to take a moment to express gratitude and appreciation and excitement, although not in the way I would have liked, to Mr. John McRae for being here with us in his first or 412th.
Who's telling?
So really grateful and thank you for taking the time to be with us.
Well, I appreciate that. Those comments are very kind. See, and I really appreciate the city of Shockabe, the school district, and all the people here. And it's unfortunate that things are like they are. I talked to Gary today. He's going back in for his next round of treatments now. But he had a very good day today. And we're hopeful and praying that he's going to be able to get back. It's the right way. I like to go back and play pickleball and the other stuff that I do. But I do appreciate the kind comments. And as my wife is probably giving up more with me doing this than I am, because of some of the things that we normally would be doing together, Grant gets in other stuff. And she, when this opportunity came, she just said you need to be able to go back and repay some of the good things that happened to us over here. So I appreciate the opportunity. And let's hope that we can help you move along here and do the best we can to keep things moving in a positive direction, which I think the board and Gary and the staff have got the district on. So, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, and that is consideration of the agenda as presented. I do not see any additions, correct? Alright, entertain a motion to consider it as presented. Come over.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Move on to item five, and that would be consent items. Yes, I can entertain a motion to approve as is, or we can...
I'd like to pull something from the consent, please.
Okay.
I would like to pull 5.5, the donation from the Chance family.
5.5 donation from the Chance family. Let's go ahead and move that to, can we call that...
9.1?
Yeah, let's do it 9.1.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, any other changes to consent? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve consent with the one extraction.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, Angela?
Second.
Second, Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. And we will then move on to the item six, which is the old business discussion items. We're going to go ahead and invite our Director of Finance and Operations Suzanne Johnson up. And this is the Suzanne show for a while, huh?
Shouldn't be too bad.
Shouldn't be too bad, no. We're going to cover 16, 17, and 17, 18 budget updates.
Yeah. There you go.
So I'm not going to spend a ton of time on June 30, because not a lot has happened since the last time that I presented to you. So the last time that I presented to you, basically the only things that have happened are one, adjustment to sped, and... I didn't have 10 files open. Alright, here it is. Or you can try to read it. Alright, so at the September 25 meeting, I presented this showing that we were at a 932,000 on the signed fund balance and a 1.2 million dollar general fund balance. And so since that time, the only entries that we booked is we had to take the $300,000 special ed adjustment to the negative. And then we had $100,000 receivable that we booked for E-rate receivable. So basically, we're meeting right at a million dollars. And then the general fund is 691,000 from those $2 bills. So nothing else occurred other than those two entries. And our TRE adjustment, that had a net impact of zero. We had to adjust, but that had no effect at all, other than just bringing those variances down. So...
Yeah, would you be a favor to make a comment or two if you would about the special ed adjustment, the fact why we're learning it now?
So those just come through MBE. We get regular updates and regular reports that come through for gen ed and special ed. And if they come through in between the time that we're still being audited, if it's material, we will look at. So that amount is something that our auditors and I agree that should be reported.
And this case, it happened to be to the negative, right? Something to be to the positive.
Yep, and there's a little bit of favorability from last year. Last year, we actually went the other way, what we estimated at the end, when the numbers actually came through, we actually had more. So we did take a little bit into this year that was positive, but then had to look at this negative at the end of the year. So there's always some variability there. And those numbers, it's always supposed to be based on a year back, but it just seems like they never stood up. Most of it is because other districts take a lot of the report, all their figures, and the intermediate districts, and so tuition building is primarily direct. And all the different schools that play a role in special ed.
We have high degree of confidence that this is the last adjustment, or at least for that topic.
Any questions on 17? We will have audit reports presented at the learning session. I think we have an approval at the beginning of it. So these numbers, they don't expect to change. They've been through pretty much every level of review for the audit. Alright. So for 17, this data is through October 31st. There's still a little bit of accounting entries to be made to it, but I figured it was better than doing September data. So right now, revenues are coming in, you know, in line pretty well with what they have in the past. They're at 21.4% budget, and they were at 20.9% last year at this time, and 22.1% last year at this time. Nothing really in any of the individual lines, other than the local fees, which we have the land sale in this year that wouldn't have been budgeted for in this year. So that one's looking like it's coming in higher than it has in previous years. So of this, 882,300, and that is the land sale. So nothing too surprising in those buckets. And then on expense, also coming in very close to what we were last year. So 25.1% versus 25.3. 22.7% in the last year. I guess I'll point out that benefits are coming in a little bit above, but also last year, we booked like the big VIBA entry at the end of the year. And we're booking that now every month. So there is a little bit of regular transactions that we're booking monthly that we booked annually last year. So I'll be keeping an eye on that. We'll be looking at that when we do the revised budget to make sure that we've captured our million dollars, that we were unfavorable at the end of last year, to make sure that we capture that properly if we were a little low from relying on what we started from last year's numbers.
Do VIBA contributions on a monthly basis fluctuate, or is it kind of one or something about that?
Yep, pretty consistent.
So then, we shouldn't see any VIBA at the end of the year in that line out of what we did last year?
No, other than when we do the people, the like the 18, or the 18 pays that actually spread theirs over 26. There will be a couple of the final payrolls that get paid in July and August, but not a big, not a huge number.
And Suzanne, I know you covered this in the finance meeting, but please refresh my memory. Equipment that were at 81.1% spent already, could you kind of elaborate on why that is?
So the, yep, equipment, basically in here is also our long-term facilities maintenance, because general fund is comprised of Fund Five as well. So we will, you know, we've done the boilers at Sweeney and a couple other things that are all front-loaded in the summer. So those things got done early. And so it's just the nature of kind of how those projects work. See if there's anything else. Supplies, last year, I looked, supplies were up last year because we had some technology purchases and things like that that we ran at the 84%. But otherwise, we're pretty consistent with the year before. So we have, there was not a lot in terms of what's going on there. So our things coming in as expected. And we are, Todd and I are working a preliminary revised budget so that we can present you and John with some stronger figures to be able to move forward and kind of plan into the future. So in the learning session, we're planning on presenting the VIBA that we've been gathering.
The revised.
Preliminary revised, yeah.
So...
Could I just comment if I may, please? Part of what my effort here in the first week and a half or two weeks is to really get a handle on where the district is in a number of different areas. One of the main ones is finance. I know that Gary Agar was working on that. I know the board has been very careful working on that for a number of months now. And what I'm trying to do is make sure I get a good handle on what the picture is and what the pattern is. Those patterns are extremely important, in my opinion, about how you project where you're going to be and how you set future budgets. And you don't want to wait till the end of the year necessarily to find out where you actually are coming out. And I want to compliment the financial staff for being able to answer questions for me and re-educate me on where the district is. Because I have always been one that's a little hesitant to make recommendations until I know exactly where we are financially and where that projection is taking us and what that pattern is. So my thanks to the people who've been helping me with that. And thanks to the board committee that, you know, and the community finance group, because the more people I talk to, the more sense I get about where we are financially. I think it's going to take a couple more weeks. We want to, I want to make sure that when the final budget document is actually given to us, and I think we got the right numbers here. But it's always good to make sure that we see what the auditors actually hand us. And I went back and looked at 10 years of audits. And I'm looking forward to getting the actual audit documents so we can be sure that what we've got. I think the other thing that I'm appreciative of is a early look at the projected income and expense, rather than waiting till mid-year or something like that. You're being careful in trying to ascertain if there's any issues going forward on a monthly basis. And I think we need to do that. Unfortunately, because you're dealing with somebody who hasn't been directly involved with it for a while, it's going to take me a little bit of time to get up to speed. I'm getting good information, but I also want to be very thorough so that when I make recommendations in the future about what your options are and how you might want to proceed with something, that we've got that, that I have a firm grasp so that I won't be infallible. I totally admit that. But the idea is that I want to make sure that I'm comfortable with whatever information I provide or whatever recommendation I do. And when I lay out, this is what we're at, here's options about how to proceed, but that we've got that down. And I appreciate the board being lenient with me here to get, to allow me to get to probably the end of this month before we make some of the decisions on things finally as we move forward. Because I do believe that we want that solid financial situation. And I want to make sure that whatever I tell them is validating what we have been saying in the district. And that I'm confident that that's where we can, to the extent that I'm able to do that. So when we even talk about tonight, something as simple as, well, I guess it's not simple. Attendance boundaries are never simple. But when we talk about our timeline for some things, I'm asking for a little bit of leeway about, let us have a couple more weeks to really get our hands into what's going on, and then proceed in an orderly fashion. And I think you're early enough with all of your work right now that we have some time. We can, you know, hold off on a couple of things, not long-term, but to make sure we know exactly where we're at. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks to Suzanne and her staff, to the board, for helping me understand where we're at, and for everybody's indulgence to give us a couple more, two weeks or so, to make me feel comfortable with where we're actually in. Thank you.
Any other questions for Suzanne? Thank you. Now, I think that ask, Mr. McRae, is perfectly fair. You've only been on the job officially for a little over a week. So you shouldn't, by any stretch, be expected to know everything about our districts and be able to bring forth solid recommendations at this point. So I think, I can speak for everybody when I say we are more than willing to give you the space you need to make sure that the decisions that ultimately are made are the right decisions and well thought. So thank you for that. Alright, let's move on to item seven, which is Dave Rolowski, and the attendance area I think it's fair, Dave, I will just kind of lead this off by saying, based on what John just mentioned, we will not be looking forward to a recommendation as far as an actual decision tonight, like maybe we had alluded to. Instead, we'll go through the
Then I could make some comments too, about where I think we're at with it and what you might be looking at to sort of bring some closure to it. Because I will just state right now, I've been very impressed, having done a number of attendance area adjustments. I've been very impressed with David and the people that have been helping him, how very thoughtful they were, and how they've looked at lots of options. And their protocol for how they did is just very well done. So, David.
So, and I want to, before I even start, we have a task force, and we have one member representing the whole unit here today. So thanks to Kelly for coming tonight, and actually Angela as well, but you have to go to...
It was fun.
Yeah, good. Okay, so if you have been, most of this is going to be review for you. So I'm going to recap the process that we went through, take a quick look at the maps again, and just talk through some of the, probably slides that you've seen almost all of these before. So I apologize if it's too much of a rerun for you. Okay. So what we're going to do is take a quick look at the process that I said. Scott, I did hear what you just said. Some of these slides were in there. So I called them action, like there were going to be a lot of verbs here. But we're going to look at the scenario selection and school start times piece, that unique group of seventh graders that have the multiple moves that we've talked about a number of times, and thoughts on the intra-district transfer process. And I know we've talked about these being two separate items, the walking distances piece versus the attendance area, and some of these other more integrated parts. So I put it on here just as almost a placeholder reminder that at some point that that will come back. Okay? Alright. So the summary of what we've done, it's a lot of text, but it's basically to say, this need that we've had, it's been discussed for many years, and even since the time that I was the principal when the sixth grade center opened, and that was six years ago. The process is involved, as John alluded to, a lot of different people. Community involvement from parents and school board, and city of Shockabe, Palmer, BOSS, childcare providers, lots of different groups involved. We've been at board meetings, listening sessions. We've got a really packed website with information. We've taken emails and phone calls, and our administration has been involved as well. So we think we've hit all the people that might be impacted. Key dates, there were other dates on here as well. It's been a board agenda item probably for the past at least six months. And you have some of it just recapped on there. Okay? The process that we used, and this has been out there since the beginning as well, is that the decision makers on this, there were initially some questions about was it a vote or how were we going to decide? And so this added some clarity. We've been kind of been going through this top part, kind of iterative, get, put a design or information out there, get feedback, and kind of refining as we went. And we're kind of moving along. This arrow right here, we're getting close to that happening, and then we'll move into the As we also, we talked about it the last session, and John has emphasized this point to me as well, is that this is really a moving target. We do the best we can with the information that we have. And even during this fairly short time period, we've seen a lot of different things that have come up that have even moved a little bit. That can vary, comments being the most recent. And then even, got this picture recently of a plot of land out on the east side of town that it says land for development. And so there's more land for sale out there that I don't know if anything's planned for something like this right now, but it is there. And even I talked to somebody from the city.
That's across from Haven Ridge, on 18, back behind the Flumington Lutheran Church.
On the west side.
On the west side, yeah. South of the Flumington Lutheran.
So there's this piece, and there's even that land that they're moving right outside of the district office right now. That is going to be two, it's going to be a doggy daycare place and a rehabilitation center. But they also talked about that there could be some apartments out there in the long run as well. And so we continually keep learning about different things that are out there. This is a slide that you've seen before. It was our, this is as of last spring, when our students were leaving. And let you just take a quick look, then I'm going to move on from this one. And then these are pieces that we've shared before as well. And again, I want to recognize, and I know that's why Kelly is here as well, this is a hard thing. It's a hard thing for everybody involved with this, but it's something that's not taken lightly. And I've gotten that message clearly from the board, and each of our superintendents, actually. So three times, I've gotten that. So we know it's tough, and we try to be sensitive to all the moving parts with this, knowing that there are going to be some people that are going to wind up moving in order to make this happen. Okay? This is just a quick recap of why we're here. We've talked about that we planned this for a long time, but really, if you look back, we nearly doubled in size, even though that growth has slowed down some over the past couple of years. We still have gone from just over 4,000 to in the low 8,000s. And so when we had three elementary schools at this time, you can see how the numbers add up. Okay? This seemed to be a slide that people asked for and found some value in. It's a heat map of where our kids are and where our schools are. And so one thing that's been, a lot of people have asked about is, why don't I go to the school closest to my house? And an example that I used is if we look out here at Eagle Creek and Red Oak, there's about 650 kids there. And each of those schools hold about 800, just under 800. So at autumn, it starts to collapse even right there, if that was your goal. And so while around those schools, there's only just over 600 kids. And if you took the closest around Sun Path, it might be over 1,000 kids. And so it starts to fall apart quickly, because not everybody can go to the school that's closest to their house. And when you mesh that with some of the other criteria, these board criteria that have been used in the past in Shockabe, over the multiple times that this has been done, and what we decided to use this time, it becomes items that conflict with each other. Okay? Those are very complicated. a very complicated puzzle. All right. So what we are looking for, going forward, is direction on which scenario, school start times, how to work with that unique group of seventh graders that we've talked about a number of times, and intra-district transfers. Okay? So I mean, need your help here, John, on how we go forward. Okay? I'll, I'll pop something up and we'll talk about what that means. All right? So one of the pieces that we talked about was, we have a lot of change. Let's minimize change where we can. And one of those places was in school start times. So we had two early start elementary schools and three later start elementary schools. Adding that sixth elementary school, it was logical, just from that pure balance standpoint, to have another one at 8:30. In talking with the Buss company as well, they were very happy with that, actually, thought that was a good choice. And so the, the plan would be that the schools would stay at their current start times. Pearson would start at 8:30.
I think it's important to point out that transportation of 8,000 kids is a complex situation. Now, we're fortunate that a lot of older kids have cars and can drive to a school and do all that, but with everybody else. And with parents working and trying to get their kids there, I think stability is a, is a nice thing to think about for people. And we have to look at how do we balance so that we can be the most productive and the most economical with our, with our busing. And if you have, to be able to balance and go three elementaries and three elementaries, that allows that particular routing to work better than if we had four and two, for example, and you'd use a bunch of buses, but only some at the later one. There, there's an economic situation here of scale for trying to balance this up. And that's one of the, the things that, that I am going to be recommending tonight is this is what we look at based on a bunch of different issues. Go ahead.
Okay. The second of those governance areas was around this seventh grade group. And we had that one group of around, depending on which scenario, 200-ish kids or around 100 and two of them, just shows 85 and 80, where there are kids that could wind up at five schools in five years. This is probably something that fits into John's earlier remarks about being, wanting to know the full lay of the land. There's a cost to this. And the, the cost to this is $111 approximately per day, per bus additional, which is just under, I think, 20,000, between $19,000 and $20,000. It's one to two buses, depending on how many kids would choose that option to take this. That would be a one-year expense.
And our opportunity here is to try and provide some continuity for our students. Not everybody might want to do that, especially if their friends around them are moving or they've got friends in the other ones. So I think one of the things that we want to look at a little bit more is the, is the financial implications of this. But we would say that there is some issue with, with trying to figure out how to give seventh graders a chance to stay in their building if we can do that without a lot of problems. So that would be part of our ultimate recommendation.
Dave, before you move on, a context clarification on my part, or my understanding. We talked about five moves in five years, and I'm not doubting that, but a couple of those moves happened because of natural building changes, grade changes anyway. So I want to make, it's not like they're moving from one elementary to another elementary to another elementary. Some of that would have happened anyway, correct?
All right. Three of them, three of the five.
Okay.
And actually, you could...
Still, they're moving five times, but three of them were going to happen anyway.
They're happening anyway. And even if you look at the way, depends how you phrase it, moves or buildings, right? Because our current, our current seventh graders, forget if we did anything else if we were here, they were in elementary school in fifth grade, they went to the sixth grade center in sixth grade, they went to the middle school or junior high in seventh grade. So that is three moves in three years that has been part of our system. This one just becomes weird because they could change junior highs and we changed the high school to a 912 building. So they, they pick up that extra move because of the grade configuration.
It's really four of the five are part of the system?
Yes.
Okay. And it doesn't change the fact that they're moving a lot, but I think contextually it's helpful to understand that it's not like the district has changed the boundaries that led to this.
Correct. Correct. And I'd say, it just depends how you want to count it. The one, it's still four. It's the building, but it got moved up a year. They wouldn't, they wouldn't have moved till 10th grade.
Right. I see what you're saying.
So...
Yeah. And if you say it was five moves in five years, you might think, well, they've moved five times in five years. That's not the case. If this scenario plays out, they will have moved potentially five buildings in five years because you're counting eighth and ninth grade for those kids.
Correct. And, and you are right. There are, a bunch of them are happening anyway. It is, this was a good example of, there's a lot of good examples, but this is one where we hadn't thought of this until some parents started telling us, hey, this is my perspective on this and look what's going to happen to. So that, that part, and there's other places as well where, again, having that broad input was, was really helpful. Okay? Good? Okay. The intra-district transfer piece, what we would, and we put, this slide I did not change at all. And, and there's actually quite a bit involved in this, that once we got direction, I think we have started to put together what might be a, a work group on this topic to understand how we are handling the grandfathering piece, how we would work with siblings, how, for a few other pieces here, questions that were more challenging for us than, that we wanted more time to work out the details on this. So if, and as the board has said, you basically, we want to say yes as much as possible within our capacity parameters and within a timeline. We would want to put this work group together once that, once this is done, work out the details and roll that, the details of that plan back to you. So we're not ready to do that right now. Okay?
And there's history in the district to allow inter-building transfers, in-district transfers. That's been done. We haven't always been able to accommodate all of the requests because you, you don't want to throw off the numbers in the building or the grade level or put too many kids in certain classrooms. So you've got to be careful with that, thoughtful. But I, there are some very legitimate reasons why someone might want to have their child attend a different building. I think our history going back has been that sometimes somebody that would be in A wants to go in B and somebody in B wants to go in A. And after you get all of those things and figure it out, it sometimes is a wash. Not always, but it can be. And the recommendation would be that we will attempt to do that, but people need to understand that there's going to be some limits, that we just can't accommodate everything that everybody might want simply because we're not set up with facilities that will necessarily do that. Again, I think, I think David and his group have been very, very thoughtful about listening to what people said and how to, how to navigate this. And they try to do what they can realistically to make this as, as easy as it can be. But it's a, it's a big undertaking. And we need, we need to take considerable care as we move forward too about how we deal with a couple of these other issues.
Okay. And then the, I have the scenarios in here. These are the maps that you've seen a number of different times. And I'll stop if you want. I don't know if you want to look at anything specific, or you think it would be valuable for me to explain one more time how to read them?
Has anything significant, other than what you already spoke about, has any significant come in, in email or calls, questions from the community since the last public that we should be aware of?
Nothing that was, I don't think there was anything wildly, wildly different there were. But that, that last listening session, there were some more specific questions really around that transfer process and kind of unique situations that maybe would be part of that work group, even if I move in and I want to move and help my sibling and some busing things, if I'm one of those, and some things like that. I wouldn't say there was anything that was, they were good questions, but nothing that was significantly different than, than what we've, we've had before. I, I don't think. No? Yes, we, no? Okay. All right.
Maybe we can suggest then, or I will suggest, that the indication is from all of the documentation and the study and, and being receptive to people communicating. I, I believe that scenario two seems to be, to B seems to be the one that allows for the other criteria to be met the best. You know, there's probably some strengths and weaknesses to any of them, but if you're looking at sort of the big picture and where, where we need to be, how that feeds into the middle schools, how that feeds into balanced building situations, I believe that, that to B does that. Now, you heard what we've talked about with the other issues too, about allowing transfers, you know, start time, that type of thing. I think the other point that has to be made here for, for everybody, including the public, you're a growing district. You've been a growing district since I came here in 2000. And we have repeatedly stated that this will not be the last attendance area situation in this district. Part of what you've got going is what, two or three housing developments, I think I read in paper, you know, that are, people are trying to sell lots and they're going to, they're going to go. As soon as that happens, you're going to see an adjustment in where the students are. I'll take you back to when Red Oak was open back in the early 2000s. It was the first elementary that was open during the time that I was here. At that time, the building was full and it got fuller because that neighborhood was basically a young neighborhood. A lot of those homes were built over a two or three year period. What kind of people come into there? They're younger, usually young families that move into elementary age and you fill up. It didn't take very long for us to be full at Red Oak. And now if you look at today's numbers, you can see that it's down. Well, why is that? Well, a number of my neighbors came, they had young kids, they, their kids went to school, but now their kids are in middle school or high school, or maybe they've already graduated from when I moved into that neighborhood back in 2000. So a point I'm making is, is this is not a static thing by any stretch of the imagination. Every, every district that's similar to here, if you go to Centennial, you go to the Osseo School District, you go to Bloomington. At one time, Bloomington had three high schools, they're down to two. This district is not going to be built out for the foreseeable future. You're not going to see a big reduction of students, but you are going to see a change of where the students live compared to where the student population is today. And I, I think that it's very important to keep pointing that out to people, that this is not the end-all, that you will be in this process again at some point. And I'm going to be willing to take that, even though I won't be around, to pay off that...
That's kind of bad.
I hope I'm still upright, but the reality is, you know, you're, you're going to probably have to make more space for elementary kids sometime in the future. That's not, that's not this coming year or down the road. It, our elementary population is going to stay, stay somewhat stable here for a couple of years because we're still getting out of the recession birth situation where the number of births went down. So we don't have, you know, an even number of kids coming through. So there are some adjustments that are rolling. We're looking at that, trying to help with the best projections that we possibly can make going out. Adjustments to good decisions that were made two or three or four or five years ago, when you had good studies done, you had a projection made. You've got to continually be looking at making adjustments. But again, as these new areas come on, there are going to be elementary kids coming out of there and that's going to switch your population base. And you're going to have to do some adjustments to building attendance areas. And you're going to have to consider potentially having to build more space. So every time you talk about this, make sure you're reminding people of that. So we don't get into this deal, well, this is it and now it's good forever. It's not. Anything else that I'm misregarding what we believe administratively or what I am recommending tonight about the to B, allowing, looking at the seventh grade issue, start time, inter-district potential for movement and, and using a plan that we have in the past with making a few minor adjustments to try and meet people's needs? Or that's, that's where I would be suggesting as administrative group, we believe that you should be looking. I don't think that you have to necessarily, normally with something like this, for what I'm used to, we would bring this kind of the final deal to you and then give you a couple of weeks to think about it before you come back and actually pass it. And it would also give us a little time to look at the financial aspects of, of the like movement.
So does that suggest the next scheduled business meeting in December or is this something?
I think it, honestly, Reggie, I think it could be done either way. You know, you're still, you know, you're still way ahead of the curve. I know we want to start telling people for sure where they're at and, and staff is always concerned about where are we going to be. But you know, there's going to be, there's going to be other things that happen. No matter when you set the date, there's going to be some stuff. You just can't let it go too long. But I think my experience says that we're, we're early enough in the process here that if it's approved in the, in your December meeting, you're right in a meeting where you normally do business like this, that that would be okay. We could look at it at the second meeting, which is the worst session because you've got a little business section to that. It's not, it's different than what I was used to, but it's a good, good plan. So I think the commitment needs to be that we need to, we need to figure out where we're going to be for sure by that next regular, that December. And I believe I will be able to have a feel for financially where we're going to, where you're at so that you can be comfortable with what you choose to do. And even with the busing issue, that might not have to be totally approved in December, but the indication of this is what we're, we would like to see happen. And then we could, we could flesh that out over six months if that takes.
Can I, I'm just going to, for anybody who's watching or whatever as well, we've been saying kind of all along, process-wise, it was November 13th. So a decision, just to, to restate it, the reason we feel we can push that off a little bit is, we are early enough in the process that logistically it doesn't hurt us in any areas. It is challenging. We recognize this was a hard process for people not knowing. It's that uncertainty piece. But we do have kind of what the recommendations would be. We want to make sure there's more certainty around the financial piece and understanding the implications, meshing with what our budget situation is and what this might be before locking in. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay. Okay? Good? Oh, I did pop this up too. This was actually, John, when you were talking about it, this was where all the developments are. We were talking about it. This one is the one that's on hold at Canterbury.
And that doesn't yet reflect, you know, what we just talked about, which is still permanent there.
Yeah, that there's just line.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Here, again, my compliments to your group for doing a great job.
Oh, no, you've done a lot.
You better do a lot. That's the expectation.
Scott, did I can ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have this for old business action? Do you believe this is a first reading then? Or shall we take action? Or are we just moving along?
You know, it probably should not be listed as an old business action item. You know, it probably should not be listed as an old business action item unless of course we want to consider it a first reading. It's kind of an interesting situation we find ourselves in right now, not expecting to be in this position. I'm quite perfectly comfortable leaving it as a first reading, yet the board is comfortable leaving it as a, call it a first reading, first recommendation.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, if we have to formally table it or whatever.
No, I, as long as I can clarify into first reading that, that would be.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead and clarify it's a first reading and I, I would feel comfortable if you are, John, saying that we'll look towards the December 11th, the school board business meeting, just to give some concrete turnaround for folks that are looking for a decision. I think by that time we'll be in a total place.
Yeah, well, we'll know better where we're at.
All right, let's, let's push the official action to December 11th. All right, thanks, Dave. Wherever you are.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay, move on to item eight, new business discussion items. Last, our Director of Human Resources, who may come up and as well as Suzanne Johnson, who provides an overview of our 2018-18 staffing process. Of course, it's in black and yellow. Huh? Is she home?
This is an Al Qaeda fan.
Last week, she was. She was proud this week. Not very proud this week.
So, while, while we're getting our crap picked up, you know, last year there was a survey that was given to all of our teaching staff in terms of what are their preferences. A pretty extensive survey. So, that was really a step before this step, but there was a lot of discussion about we doing that, so we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. So, you know, in terms of, it's a timely topic, staff, staffing, we're going to give you a pretty broad overview and Suzanne's going to jump in wherever I seem to forget sometimes. But staffing really is driven by those three items that you see there at the very top, which is, you know, student enrollment, class registration and budget. And of course, we're in the midst now of really trying to determine what our, what our budget is, so that will drive staffing in general. But we've also, just last week, reissued this, the student, or the staff survey because we give people another chance that some things have changed and what might they think now? The last time I looked, we closed that survey, but it was over 200 people have made some level of change in their previous survey preference. I was saying to the personnel committee this morning, there, it looks like to me, just generally speaking, and I don't know if we talked, you talked about it last year from the survey, that the number one preference for most folks is about 65% of those people are really liking their current building, so that's their preference, the building. We, we added the element of school start times. We thought that was going to drive because, drive some changes because people were for daycare and it's, it's a really small percentage as a, as a preference. So, we originally, we knew that the attendance areas is going to drive some of this and I originally had on there, we were going to maybe make a decision tonight, but now I know we're not, so actually that's a discussion and continues a discussion. Then another element that's come up related to staffing is how are people going to be assigned? And I know we had previously, there had been a date from last year saying we would come up with that decision somewhere in December and maybe January. We sort of kept that timeline, that timeline, depending on where we get with our budget may change. But I think one of the things that, that we've sort of felt that people are most concerned about is are we going to, you know, throw, throw everyone into a big pot and decide, you know, move everybody around? And I guess we, what we, if you see the really small print under the, under the assignments and talent, you'll, you'll see that that, that really what we're thinking is that we'll focus on being a real limit, that amount of disruption that can happen. I think Dave used another term for that, but yeah, we really don't want to have a lot of disruption in terms of staff, so there might not be as many movement moves in staff as people think. We've got the two middle schools to staff, there's a large number of staff there who wish to stay, I'm sure, that both of those buildings, we have Pearson also deciding where they want to go. But the idea would be not to make any unnecessary moves if, if we don't have to. And obviously, the assignments are going to be based on preferences, what people want to do, how license, licenses fit into that, because there will be some different license requirements at the two middle schools. Then teamwork, how we, how do we build really good teams in all those buildings? And I guess particularly thinking about Pearson because it, it really will have no staff other than the folks who want to stay there. And then skills and experience, what do those people require? Then one of the, the bottom little section there about staffing model, Dave is an expert in helping you work with data. And so, we've been working with Dave, Suzanne and I about working with, working with a new staffing model that we can use when we're looking at how many staff do we need and also what's our budget target. I don't know, you can talk more about that.
Yeah, we definitely, our, our elementary staffing model works well for figuring out hotspots and putting a number of kids in and right away knowing if, if we've exceeded and need to add a teacher, but our secondary has so much more to it that we're trying to build a more robust model that says, here's our core classes, but what do we need to pull out is kind of functioning different than regular classrooms. So, just working to find the best way to model that out, which Dave has done a great job at, at helping us with the model piece. And then I guess I would just say from a budget standpoint, I think I have told you all that probably in August, we went through a meeting with each of the departments and saying, are these your staff, are the FTE right, are the codes right? We made all those changes in the system and now have a new kind of staffing spreadsheet, which we're able to then load directly into the budget model. The budget model allows us to say, we're going to update these manually, we're going to update them by adding a percentage, or we're going to update them based on actual data. So, we can pull all the staff in based on those codes from that file and it lines them right up with the adopted budget and allows us to say, your revised budget should really be this based on all of these people and where you say that they should be. So, kind of combining these pieces with that to build what we think is right, also to look at what our ideal size is, how we can sustain what we have. And so, really saying, we know what our classrooms are like, but then the core staff outside of that, what do we need in each building, making sure that, you know, based on number of students, that each building has the same core staff in it and that it's consistent. So, kind of taking a number of pieces and trying to pull that all together. So, when we talk at the learning session, we will have all of the, all of that data pulled into the model tree to be able to see what it looks like.
That's two weeks' worth.
So, any questions?
No, just a comment that applaud the reissue of the staff survey that was done a year ago. Several people, several superintendents, several, you know, different, you guys are both new to the district, so I think it was a very appropriate step to take that extra round of due diligence and really hear from our staff and really work to make their progress.
Suzanne, I'd like to clarify too, this new, call it a budget tool or staffing model that you have used and now have, I know you've been talking for months about getting all the data implemented into it in order for it to show us, this is a new system. We've not done anything like this before and it's, from what you're telling us, pretty impressive on how detailed it can be and how it can show us what we need to see.
Yeah, I was amazed how quickly we could pull that file in and it just lined up exactly what, where our big variances were, what we needed to look into. Now, granted, some of it's just, you know, maybe a principal's in that position and it was a supervisor before or something like that, so some of them are just getting things in the right buckets, but it identifies those really quickly and allows us from a budgetary standpoint to say, you've got people being billed to that code, so you better have a budget there for that amount. So, and I like the way the tool, you don't have to pick all or nothing. You can say for this group of people, I want to pull in from the staffing model, for this group, I want to add 3% to it, and for this group, I want to go sit down with the, each building and say, here's how much you spent the last two years, here's how much you spent year to date, here's what you spent year to date, same time last year. And so, we have met with those departments. I just have a couple of people left to meet with that I wasn't able to meet with last week, so we've actually gotten to each building and said, does this look right? So, we've definitely had people who appreciate it. We've had people who, like I think John Jankie said, have never really been involved in this, at this level, so people are liking the involvement and I think that's good because you're at the source of who knows what's going on. And I wouldn't know, so it's been a good exercise for everybody to make sure we're all on the same page. And then I can kind of send it back out and say, here's what we agreed upon and there's no surprises.
Sounds kind of robust.
Very smart. Thank you. Any other questions? Look forward to two weeks from now.
Yeah, maybe two actually. I need to, just to see it all. All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to really at 9.1. Adam, Angela pull out consent.
Yes, I just wanted to point out and thank the Robin and Bob Chance, parents of Hannah Chance. They have donated $2,500 to Shockley High School's Chapter of SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions. Hannah was one of those students that was in that tragic car accident, that's its number 14. And the people who donated to Shock were strong, helped make this donation possible. And I'd like to make a motion to take this donation.
Accept and recognize.
Thank you.
Accept and recognize.
All right.
Yes.
Second by Matt. Any discussion?
But I would like to thank them as well for, I think it's very kind of them and hopefully will make a big impact.
Didn't I see maybe man can comment necessarily, but in the paper, there should be events here, third, sixth, third, yeah.
Yeah.
In support of that.
Organization.
Room and organization in light of what happened.
I'll be there. Heard you all come.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pull the same seven. That motion carries. All right, move on to 10, the infamous other, there are no other. We'll move on to 11, committee reports. Now, do we want to add to these committee reports or because they are attached in this new format, it could be kind of one of those.
They're not, they're not currently posted in board book, I would say that, but they're available for review at any time. These are just the list of the committees that have occurred since the last one.
Okay. All right.
Scott, I'll give an update on the CFAC meeting. I think a lot of these other ones, we, I know I reported on the finance committee the last time, so I don't really need to do that again. But CFAC met again, covered a number of items, some of which we talked about tonight, but it's, it's helpful to remember that we've got assistants on this group who are picked select purposely because of their financial acumen and background. And so, they bring a lot to the table and ask some very interesting questions and have some good insights. So, we are walking that line between covering things that are just sharing information and what do you think about it, to diving through the weeds, because of their background, it's kind of like, what about this? Because they live in, so it's an interesting conversation. I'm sure Suzanne would agree with that. But we covered everything from the budget information we covered tonight to the process and the timelines for our budget we did talk about. And I don't know when we're going to be sharing the PCAR update, our audit report with the board.
I'm hoping that report's available for the finance committee on the 20th.
There you go. So, the finance committee first will bring it to the board, but that audit that we talked about, that corrected ended, has been completed. I don't think I know all the details, but the earth shattering came out, which is good in the sense that it did uncover a significant flawed process or other problems. So, it's reassuring. We also talked a little bit about the audit and again, we're going to hear more about that, that's our no major concern and they completed that in good fashion. We know some of the things we're going to hear that have been repeated, we think we've addressed, at least one issue that historically been, has been an issue, the financial statement preparation, statement if you will. We talked a little bit about the levy and we set future dates, so it was a very good discussion. Then we had some free flowing discussion at the end, which is again, helpful with this group and it just was an opportunity to discuss many different things. So, I think they're groups operating well and providing not only good insight, but an opportunity for us to hear what they're thinking and maybe how things are playing or being perceived.
Thanks, Reg. Any other committee updates or reports that anyone wants to make?
Well, we, I gave a, an update on the last one. We had one for this meeting, but most of it was covered in tonight's meeting, so you heard it all. So, good. And we are, we did have to move the date of one of our communications advisory meetings, unfortunately, so that will be coming up here at the end of the month as well.
It was scheduled on election day.
On election day, we're not allowed to do that apparently.
Okay. Item 12, recognition of visiting the board meeting. From gallery, pre-recognition. Okay, item 13, upcoming meetings and important dates. We've got bond oversight on Wednesday evening and then the 27th, we're back at it full speed. And the rest of the dates are laid out there and before you know it, January 8th, 8th will be upon us. We will have already celebrated the holidays.
I got it.
Yeah, we have, there's a.
18.
Well, no, I was going to say is that I think we have actually our finance committee meeting on the 20th.
It should, yeah, that.
20th of December?
No, November.
November?
Oh, you missed one.
Okay. Prior to the.
It's, it's just going to be separate to allow us to review the audit here before we bring it the next week.
Thank you.
So, clarify, we, we have, or we wouldn't need it.
You should. Schedule it, just, I think.
Let's leave it in case we want to have it.
Okay.
We think the 20th may be a little bit longer just because we're going to cover a number of things.
That's great, thank you. I noticed that CFAC isn't on there either, but I'll give Sarah those dates and we have the previous meeting.
I think seven, four.
Okay, so just go around the horn here at the board table. Any, any other updates, Matt? Questions? Mary? Angela? I'll just put a shameless pitch out there for the Shockley High School production of Mary Poppins. If you haven't gone to see it, there are three more opportunities this week. Can anybody send it? I don't want anybody in it. It doesn't look like my son, you know? So, it's a fantastic production. These students have really gone all out and it's, it's just a very difficult, very challenging piece of work artistically across the board and they're executing to the nines, so very proud of them.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to mention that I had an opportunity to meet with a group of educators from Elkhart, Indiana. They came to visit us to learn about what we are doing. They too are in a period of transition and I thought we had some little great discussion. It was, it was awesome to be able to gain some perspective from another community and to have them learn from us, so. So, I'm all right.
All right. Reg? There? All right. Suzanne, anything else? Dave, anything else?
Maybe just add another December 4th meeting if you're trying to decide where to go. There's a district advisory council meeting. I don't think that conflicts with any CFAC numbers, but.
Oh, no, not memory, no.
Yeah. So, if you want that on, then that'll be here as well on the 4th. And I think we beat you guys in reserving the 4th, or what we're willing to negotiate.
Wow.
You probably caught that, so she reserved number space. We're good.
Possession, so.
I know. Bob, agree? No? Keith?
No, I don't have anything, but just to tag, because I was meeting with somebody with a pen, The Mary Poppins Show has, has some flying in it. with a pin, the Mary Poppins Show has, has some flying in it, not real flying, aren't they, aren't they flying?
More than once.
I heard about that. Yes, they may be. Well, we didn't want to give away the magic now, would we? So we just have to come and see.
It's a draw.
It may be a draw, you never know. Ashley?
The next early release date is November 29th.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, here are nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, here we are.